Okay, good evening everyone, call a meeting to order if you can please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome to the August second, two thousand eighteen, Tana Riverhead Planning Board Meeting. Uh, we have a couple of discussion items to start with tonight. Uh, we're gonna take them out of order because the first one on the agenda, uh, has not arrived yet. So we'll go to item two on the agenda, discussion item for Bating Hollow Cottage condominiums.
Uh, it was my understanding there was gonna be a contractor here for the applicant. I don't know if he's here yet, but i- it's a minor application that I can present to you if you're comfortable with that. Uh, so the planning departments received a site plan application to demolish an existing two hundred and sixty-two square foot deck and construct a new expanded six hundred and twelve square foot deck on a six hundred and, uh, I'm sorry. Construct a new six hundred and twelve square foot deck on an existing single-family residence. Uh, the reason, uh, this is a single-family residence coming as a site plan application before the planning board is because the site of the house is in the Bating Hollow Cottage condominiums. Um, the Bating Hollow Cottage condominiums has a history of planning board being established as the authority to grant amendments to the condominium map. Um, I just had a staff report, on page two of the staff report, you can see the aerial view of the Bating Hollow Cottage condominium grounds. Uh, and a figure two on page two is a view of the existing cottage taken from the street. Um, setbacks, uh, the, the Bating Hollow Cottage condominium is located within the RA forty zoning district. And although the schedule of dimensional regulations, uh, is lo- listed in the town code, it cannot really be applied to the Bating Hollow Cottage condominiums. Um, there's no real parcel, you know, no real property per se. Um, a lot of the cottages on the property have already expanded beyond the footprints of the original cottages. Uh, the proposed deck would maintain a twenty-nine point one eight foot setback from the neighboring cottage to the west, and it will maintain a thirty-six point five foot setback from the neighboring cottage to the east. Uh, the planning department has received a signed notarized statement from the owner of cottage number twenty-three, uh, which is the cottage that's located directly to the west of the subject parcel. Um, it's the one that would be most affected by the construction of the deck. Uh, that statement has said that the owner of that cottage number twenty-three is okay with the deck as proposed with setbacks. Uh, we've also received a sign-off from the Bating Hollow Cottage condominium homeowners association and the board of directors, uh, giving the applicant approval to construct the deck as proposed. Uh, during a site visit conducted by planning staff, it was noted that there will be some minor grading and leveling required to construct the proposed deck. Uh, earlier this afternoon, I did receive something from Young and Young Engineering stating that the ground can just be leveled, uh, there will not need to be any excavation or, you know, exportation of any material from the site. Uh, one recommendation that I had during the site visit, uh, as you'll see on page four of the staff report, um, there was a gutter coming off of the house with a leader that's just kind of going onto the ground. Uh, staff recommends that the applicant provide stormwater management to capture runoff from the cottage. Um, that will need to be addressed by an engineer. Again, those plans were received today, um, they just haven't undergone a review to see if it's adequate to contain all the runoff from the house. So that will, that is something that we will re- refer to the engineering department, and that will be reviewed prior to any approvals from the planning board.
Right, did they need any zoning relief?
No, no, no. Again, because those setback, the, the setback requirements for the RA forty, they're not really applicable into the condominium grounds. Uh, it was not referred to, just up the county planning commission as a referral was not required. Um, and the building department had no comment on the application, and the engineering department will be referred those new plans with the drainage calculations, uh, and comments will be forthcoming from them. So I've met with it.
So what they're proposing is consistent with the other units in the community?
Correct.
Okay, and we have a resolution to schedule a public hearing tonight?
Correct.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
Oh, okay, thanks Greg. Okay, next item on the agenda is Long Island Sports Park, is that here?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, uh, now for item number one to the floor. What do you want?
We'll take number, number three we just called. You can have a seat. Okay, so they're requesting a change Greg?
Correct.
Would, if you could just explain that to us exactly what?
Uh, well, one of the conditions of the final site plan approval for the Long Island Sports Park, uh, was that the applicant was to provide a split rail fence around the wetlands on the property. Um, the purpose of the split rail fence was to provide some sort of physical delineation to prevent people from just kind of going into the wetlands and, you know, damaging some ecologically sensitive areas. Um, the applicant has since requested an amendment to that. Um, they have proposed, I believe, I provided a letter, uh, to the planning, you know, the applicant provided a letter. He's basically proposing a, uh, like, sort of stanchions with a rope. Uh, you know, I, I wasn't going to make a recommendation on behalf of the applicant. I was under the impression that he was gonna come here and make his case before the board, um, as to what the board feels would be appropriate.
So how much in footage are we, are we contemplating with?
To do the entire lakes, four thousand square feet.
Square feet or linear feet?
Oh, linear feet, I'm sorry. Four thousand feet.
Four thousand running feet?
Running feet, yes.
And it's, it's purely because of the cost?
Mainly because of the cost, yes.
But when we had, um, discussed this at, the, the work session, didn't we, did we get into detail about the fence and, and like you said, the delineation of the wetlands?
Uh, there was some discussion, I mean, you know, with, the applicant was aware that we were gonna make the recommendation for a split rail fence. Nothing was really brought up in opposition to that, you know, the applicant seemed to be agreeable to it. Um, you know, I, my recommendation I had at the spirit and the intent of providing some sort of physical delineation to the wetland. You know, we weren't asking them to build a six-foot wall. If someone was gonna go over a split rail fence, they're gonna go over a rope. Um, you know, i- it's a matter of the fact that the applicant has proven that there's gonna be consistently events with large numbers of people. They're not gonna be monitored, you know, no one's gonna be babysitting people to ensure that they stay out of the wetlands, so, you know, planning staff recommends something that will provide some measure of physical delineation to these sensitive areas. If, you know, I, I don't know if a rope is really gonna do that.
What is immediately adjacent to these areas?
The actual fairways to the golf course. Uh, so then, nothing has changed, uh, we do disc golf in that area where the ponds are, uh, the wetlands. And whether somebody throws a, as it was, got somebody hit a golf ball and then they would go in there and get it. Um, it would be the same thing, you know, the occasional, uh, disc golfer, that disc goes there, he would go get it. Whether we put a split rail or we put a rope fence, um, the same thing's gonna occur. They're gonna go through that fence, um, and retrieve their disc, their golf ball.
How deep is the water there?
The water there is about probably three feet, the majority of it. One section that's a little deeper in the middle, uh, but the edge and the majority of it would be about three feet.
And once, in this, if you're about this facility, then the bar, the, the golf course where we then here in Walno, it's the wetland, golfers don't fish it out. We're doing a frisbee golf now similar to that, and what they wanna make sure is, is not, what, what, in case of friction, you might go off it, or, also it's letting employees know, and the owner know, or the tenant know, they can't place structures within the pond area. We had, and he and I communicated about this through, there was one target or something in the pond?
Correct.
And that's not allowed, uh, so the fence is there to make sure that people don't wander off that area. Um, so he knows now that he's not supposed to be placing frisbee targets in the pond. But it's also to let frisbee players know, stay out of that area. And more importantly, uh, I think those frisbee, they're, they're, they're playing towards a target. They're having a Mexican rodeo, they're sponsored by Mexico?
Uh, the other.
They don't know where to go or not go, there's gonna be a lot of people, um, and we wanna make sure that, you know, these facilities, as visited, not wander off in, in, in these wetland areas. They should be able to find their, uh, a roof fence. I don't, I don't see how that can, like, incline or, or, in space, in, in, like, a split rail. Um, more possible alternative is, uh, is, uh, a snow fence with, with steel fence posts and have the applicants for these special events install them, and they have to install the fire to start the event, and then you would look after, and the applicant can do that, so.
Right, and those events, not, but those events take place in an entirely different spot than where these wetlands are. So the rodeo and, and these other events that happen, happen in a venue area, which is right behind the catering hall. That's nothing to do with the proximity of where these fences are being required for the wetlands. That would be on the golf course with your occasional golf, but these festivals are, the people, uh, and the crowds are actually contained to an area. So one, that doesn't have anything to do with what we're asking with the pond fencing, or the wetland fencing. Two separate issues.
So then the question is, is how do we make sure that the golfers know to stay out of those areas and more importantly, that you, the players know not to, want to go to areas?
You know, I, I don't, I don't know that we wanna set a precedence here, and I think that's what we'd be, we would be doing. I mean, you know, if we said that that would suffice a rope fence, I, I, you know, we'd be setting precedents. You know, how many, how many ponds perhaps not the size, you know, how many exist in the town of Riverhead? Quite a few, what we?
But so you're gonna require all of the wetlands in Riverhead to have a?
They have to be protected in some way.
Fence around them?
You know, I mean, and, and the split rail was, you know, that's probably the least expensive of all of them.
Actually, it's not, but it's actually?
What's, what's, what's less expensive?
Twenty thousand dollars to install the fence on.
Well, the, the rope fence doesn't do it for me either.
Yeah.
Um, you ask a question about other wetlands in town, will any ones that have large events that come to the planning board for approval and agree, agree to it as a condition of site plan approval is a different story, and that's where we are right now. You had already agreed to it, you're back to us asking us relief. Would, uh, a little more time help you at all?
With the?
Full installation?
Split rope?
Yeah.
I mean, it wouldn't hurt us, uh, more times better than no time, I mean.
Or if there, if there's another alternative, like, you know?
Well, the alternative, these large events are contained to one area. When there's a large event, we put the fencing up to keep people in that area and don't allow them to buy the wetlands.
That's, that's temporary, that's, those are temporary.
I, I, I meant in terms of not, not a split rope. Is there another type of fencing, is there another type of barrier that could be, that may be cheaper? You know, that will, that will, that will still provide more protection than just a, a rope.
The post, the post in rope tells people not to go past that area.
Is there something in between that and this split rail?
Is there something in between that?
You're getting some concern by the board members if there's something in between?
I would say probably a, would, in between that would be some type of snow fencing, uh, a plastic fencing. Again, the statics.
Is that not gonna be able to retrieve, you know, there?
Nobody's gonna be able to retrieve it, and what's gonna happen?
I'll, I'll be honest with you, the rope doesn't bother me. The water's only three feet deep, and you have to be an idiot to drown, and?
And again, if you looked at the property, it's, the edge of the lakes is all overgrown, and it's large. People do not go through that unless they absolutely have to. Um, there's one area that's kinda open, and again, that could be closed off. But the majority of these lakes, uh, of these ponds?
People are gonna trespass, it doesn't matter what kind of fence you have, they're gonna trespass, so. Do you routinely, do you routinely have that, uh, bridge of the, of the balls that are in it? Do you routinely have someone in it?
It's very rare, if, in the past month, if three people had lost a disc in that area, that would be a lot. It, it's not.
What events coming up?
What's that?
What events are coming up?
Right now, what's coming up, the only one I know about is the, uh, rodeo festival.
The Mississauga concert?
What's that?
The Mississauga concert.
Which concert?
There's any concert advertised, we have a four city concert.
The Blues, Blues Festival? Oh, the Blues Festival, yeah, I think that's pending, I don't know, I know he's filed for Pittsburgh. I'm not sure if that's actually, or go, but yes, there is one plan. Blues Festival, again, that's something that would happen in a venue area. And again, my recen- what I would like to see happen is any of the events, you actually quarrying off the venue, keep the people inside the venue, that's where they belong, rather than roaming the property as operations manage it for the place, that's what I try and achieve on the events. We control events, we know how to do that, the ponds and what, the wetlands. It, it's not where people go as a norm, it really isn't.
What are these, the town board, uh, applications that, that you're?
I'm sorry, repeat?
How do you get permission, a town board application?
Yes.
On the property?
For an event on a property?
Yeah.
Yes, they go through, uh, you got the numbers, what's called a four?
Two, two five.
Two fifty-five, yes. So?
I don't know if you have the support for the rope, other than myself. You wanna take a little time and come back with other options that are more affordable, that will get the same job done, or?
I mean, that could work, yes.
Why don't you look into that, I think that would be the right way to do it. I'm not, I'm really not comfortable with the, uh, with the rope. You know, and I'm all for the saving dollar, you can't, you know, as a landowner, but, uh, it's just not comfortable. Will you go on the property and take a look at?
I would love, I would invite yous to come, I can show you.
I'll be, I'll be there for you.
Yeah.
I, I've, I've looked at it before, but I just, I don't remember that.
I would just like to show you guys, show you guys, uh, what goes on there, how it's actually controlled by nature itself. Um, and, and you'll see on one side, uh, where there's that, the road on the west side of the property, it's actually a, a big hill which nobody would go down. So there's only a couple spots that they can actually get in. We wanted to say, you know, put something in split rail or, or something in those areas, that would be good. And you'll see, it's very undesirable for anybody to, to go into that. There's no, no reason they would want to go in that, um, other than?
Unless a hundred dollar frisbee goes in there, right?
Well, they're not a hundred dollars, you know?
Just a question for the applicant.
Yes.
You had any other targets in the pond for this one?
No, nothing. That was a one-time thing that was out there, soon as we found out it couldn't be there, it was pulled back.
Okay, so you're gonna research maybe an alternative, and then a couple of board members are gonna come down and take a look and see if, uh, some of the areas warranted, or some that maybe we could relax in. We'll have you back, okay?
Absolutely, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is number one, chapter two nineteen for Donald Schneider Junior. You're kidding. Good evening, your name is it?
My name is Ruth Anderson. Lucy and I worked up the bar of Alan, and I represent Donald Schneider. We're seeking to protect his property, which, and the front and bluff on Long Island Sound, that is severely related. Um, we've been working on this for, uh, over a year, and first? Uh, okay, when we first, uh, worked with this, we made application to New York State D E C for a stone revetment, and received that approval. We then filed with, uh, with town for the same rock revetment. And we're told we had to provide alternatives, there was a lot of back and forth. We came up with one which consisted of a bulkhead with front and toe armor, which is something we use quite, uh, often in the town of Southold. So, we then were directed back to New York State D E C to obtain that permit, which we did. Um, during the, um, pendency of this permit process, we've incurred additional damage to the bluff as a result of the five nor'easters that occurred, uh, between November and May of this year, losing yet more land. Particular house is dangerously close to the top of the bluff. The neighbor to the east had installed a retaining wall on top of the bluff, which is now hangs in air pretty much, uh, can be seen on the survey. Um, so, and in fact, when you look at the survey, you'll see remain of a bulkhead for a beach that was obviously, uh, approximately a hundred feet out, or I should say hu- yeah, approximately thirty or forty feet seaward than it is today. This is a very, uh, difficult situation for the owner, because if we can't stabilize the bluff, we can't protect the fellow's property. The overall project consists now of a bulkhead with the front and toe armor, and a very aggressive plan to plow, uh, to plant the bluff as was done next door successfully. And we're hopeful that, uh, we can commence work, um, immediately after Labor Day, um, so that we can protect this property from what we anticipate to be further nor'easters occurring from the fall into the spring of next year. So we're asking the board to approve the bulkhead with the front and toe armor, uh, at which point we will proceed with the building permit with the town, the best construction, and soon after Labor Day, if we ought to, uh, um, inconvenience, uh, beachgoers in the area.
Staff have any pictures of it?
Uh, staff received pictures, uh, in fact, this board heard the initial application, I believe, on October the twenty-fourth, uh, we had a demonstration of some of the drone photography of, of the front. I did not bring those in today's file.
Is the entire project on the applicant's property?
Uh, it, it, the, um, returns are going to match up to the adjacent properties. And one of the concerns all along that, that region of Wading River are the inconsistencies of erosion protection structures that are interrupted with, uh, just natural, um, sand burns at the toe of the slope, revetment walls. In this case, uh, we always, well, in all cases, we asked for alternatives. We could've moved forward with the revetment wall, but when the option for the bulkhead came forward, which has probably got better integrity for this particular application. Uh, Mr. Anderson was just asked to go back to the D E C to get a modification to his earlier title, wetland permit, um, so we've been waiting for that. I know that, uh, the planning board's engineer Vincent Gordiello and I had worked, worked through a couple of other engineering aspects that we wanted to, to see, um, on this particular design. The only thing I would ask for Mr. Anderson to provide is, is, uh, his comments regarding the longer-term maintenance program, uh, for both, uh, the, the toe of slope, but also for, uh, the terracing and the plantings. What we have seen in this particular region is that as that begins to fail, uh, maybe new homeowners come in, et cetera, they're unaware that there's a maintenance program that is part of the permit process, and in this particular case, that would be important to stabilize that, that bluff base.
Does anything about this project impede the public's ability to use the beach?
No, not, nothing that would be so.
Not even during construction?
There may be some temporary inconvenience, but the beach there is fairly wide, and that's largely because, um, the toe of the slope used to be much more seaward than, than where it is today. So the beach has actually enlarged a bit, but the bluff as a road is significantly, uh, fairly steep at this location.
Okay, um, Vinny, do you have any other, anything to add?
There are, there were, uh, there were callouts on the plan, I mean, there are two locations where they identified the length of the stream and the length of the, uh, islands. And they pulled it out as, um, eighteen feet minimum. But that should be identified as thirteen, um, I'm sorry, eighteen feet maximum, which what was called on the plans. And I believe that that should be in there, you know?
That's acceptable, okay.
Okay, any other questions? So?
No, because we can get that, I mean, it will be, it, that. Are you going to mark up a set of plans and be submitted for that minor change?
It'd be happy. Oh, make it a condition of approval, that's fine.
That's fine.
So we made, make that, that maybe, that?
Just to make, make a number of new resolutions. Okay, we'll vote on the resolution and the resolutions, okay? Second, thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing, um, for Riverhead Islamic Center.
Good evening, Carl's Cuddy, four four five Kicking Avenue, Riverhead, for the applicant. And with me tonight is Brian Fisher, who is the architect of the site. Also, there are a number, as you can see, of the Huxland representatives from this community in the audience. Seven fifty-one Harrison is just across a little bit to the north of the high school. It's actually directly across from the wooden lot. It's on the west side of the road, um, consists of one point three acres of land. Has a house on it that's now boarded up, and will be rehabilitated for the clerk, cleric at the site. Uh, that house would be approximately eighteen hundred square feet when it's finished. There will be a mosque that's constructed, it's a masonry-type building. Have two floors, total area of sixty-five hundred square feet. The first floor is a worship area, has a men's prayer area and a women's prayer area. The second floor consists of a kitchenette area, a classroom, and restrooms. As you note on the plan, the driveway is on the north side of the property, so it's to prevent any congestion when the school was on. But there shouldn't be a session, a prayer session at this site that will interfere with the school operation. Uh, the Friday afternoon prayer is the most significantly attended prayer, that's usually over by two o'clock. So there should not be any problem, um, with interfering with the school operation. Uh, this site has adequate parking, it has sixty-five spaces, it's only required to have forty-two. Uh, it's gonna be surrounded by a vinyl chain-link fence. So it, I think, meets all the site plan requirements, I think we've seen it. Uh, as far as I know, uh, this is a site, uh, that's appropriate? As far as I know, this is a site that's appropriate for this particular use and I'm going to ask you to endorse it and approve it. I would hand up to you a number of letters from various community members in support, they ask that it be put in your file.
The Friday prayer, the one that you reference as being the most attended, about how many people you think would attend that on a Friday? Okay, you also mentioned a classroom?
Yes.
And what would be the use of the classroom?
I think on, particularly on the weekends, I think they expect to have some youngsters, probably fifteen to twenty at the most.
Oh, do you have a question? All right, any questions from the public or comments from the public?
Yeah.
Please come up to the podium and just state your name for the record. Up here, please.
Yes, I own in property almost, um.
Your name, please.
Uh, Mananaswe, Mananaswe.
And your address?
Seven nineteen Harrison Avenue. And everybody we know, that street needs to build in a new houses, like abandoned. I came in many time and I asked for it, to this street needs to, somebody take care of it. They told me to, okay, and the counselor comes and they talks. People, nobody lives there, only two people, we own in a house and we live in there. Our property, I spent almost a hundred fifty thousand dollar equity. But now my house worth two hundred fifty thousand because nobody thinks too much, small section. And there too much commercial is in there there and the buildings, we have any schools, we have all doctors' offices, we have laundry parlors, we have slippies, only small section, we are people. I'm not against any religions, I'm came here United States too. Like I said, I'm not against nobody, welcome to like, uh, calm and lean like neighbor. I miss and see neighbors. This makes anymore traffic, we have any traffic in the schools, it's, it's like a counting to this is a main street. And I talk in all my neighbors, they wasn't scared, I'm not scared to say in the truth. And nobody was greed, everybody said this is too much commercial buildings and we building in there there. Houses is all old, we are in the coding system. And everybody, not only the house is bought out, it's in the, beside the two houses, me, I don't know number, that is in the bought out too. We have funeral home, that is too much, somebody comes and have money buys this. What I do, what I do, then we build these small section stores, all commercial, and they buy me out and then I move out.
As far as the zoning, I can probably answer one of your questions. Churches are allowed to go in any zoning district, they're exempt from certain zone, you know, from having to abide by zoning for commercial or residential. Churches are allowed to go in any zoning district, am I correct, Roger? Do you have a second?
Yes.
Thank you.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't say, I don't know who you're trying to be, I'm sorry.
Anybody that knows the answer?
Yes.
Okay. You understand, they, any church of any religion can go in any zone in the town, they're not precluded from certain zoning districts.
So, and my street allows to more commercial buildings to put there?
Uh, it's not, it's not considered a commercial building, it's a church.
It's for me, it's in like commercial, because like they said, you have to have it, uh, forty people. Can you believe a small spot there, how have to put it forty cars in there there and we cannot walk? When there was operating the funeral home and there wasn't a parking outside, so hard was to get it inside in our houses. For me, it's not right, because too many, like I said, how have to, uh, we present in my house again now, have to go, go down anymore. Because nobody wants to buy houses, looks so awful and the coding is so, and everybody knows in my street how it looks. And then nobody cares, only we care, we put it a billion, uh, a dollar we spent to be remodeling in the high school. But when parents drop offs and the kids, what they see in the front in my house, I'm going, beside me, uh, was in the foreclosure of that house, right? And came in Pakistan man, I'm not against, bought it, spending five thousand dollar and then now renting. I calling and telling, look, I put a ten thousand dollar fence, I want to, he said, he's not here, I care and I hurt. What I do, I'm going neighbors yard, I getting a poison ivy, I want my street to, I go every night in the bed and I'm dreaming what happens tomorrow to my street looks like other street. Wars in the street, Harrison Avenue, entire in the Riverhead.
Okay, your comments are part of the record and we, we hear your concerns. Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to address the board on this application? Just come up to the podium, please, and just state your name.
I live in Flanders for the past twenty years and there is no, nothing here, like no mosque, no Muslim community, nothing. So, year after year, we have a lot of Muslim people moving to Riverhead and Flanders. And for the past ten years, I take my kids all the way to Saldan, to the mosque in Saldan, because there is nothing close for Sunday school, to teach them the language and, you know, religion. So I think it's going to be a good idea to have something in Riverhead, so I'm for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Just come up to the podium, please.
My name is Ali Hamdoushi. I understand young lady over there is frustrated about her issues, but at the same time, I would love her to feel that it's going to be a house of God for worship. So, I think it's going to be good for her to have some peace and, and, and safety for that matter. And, and we pray of God for her to sell her house for hundred thousand dollars, something like that, so it'll be something good. But, yeah, we need a mosque in, in Riverhead, so, and the community is growing, the Muslim community is growing. And we would like to see a mosque and we truly appreciate it, we put it into consideration, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, I would just like to answer two of the points that she made. One, that the parking is going to be off the street, we have more parking than we need, and I pointed that out before. But secondly, in this town, virtually half of the churches, if not more, are in residential areas. And in each case, I think they've improved the residential area that they're in. And I don't see any area that has a church in it that's a rundown area, so I think it would be to her benefit to have a church there. Thank you.
Hi, dear members, my name is Malik, I own a business right here in Riverhead, ifixscreens.com. We have about forty stores. I used to live in Riverhead, but we didn't have no mosque here, so I have to move back to Saldan, take all my family there so we can attend the mosque prayers and, you know, the religious education for the kids. So we would love to have a mosque right here. It's very, it's not a lot of people, but there are a lot of people. I used to own a supermarket and I know all my community, like I can represent everybody right here, you know, like you can see every seven eleven, every grocery store, gas station, they're all Muslim people. There are Turkish people also, they didn't actually get the news, you know, once they had the news, they would be right here. The whole town, all would be fall. So I'm just saying it's a very good thing and plus, you know, once we're going to move into the community in the neighborhood, you will see a very big difference. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else, please come up? Any other comments? Do you have any questions or comments from the board? Make a motion to close the public hearing for the Riverhead Islamic Center, some word. Second, the motion made in second to close the public hearing for the Riverhead Islamic Center, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, public hearing is closed. Okay, next item on the agenda is a public hearing for Real Life Church in Waiting River. We'll just give it a minute, okay? The public hearing is closed, we have other business on our agenda, if you want to wait until afterwards when we open it up for public comment? No. We just had a public hearing. Okay, Real Life Church in Waiting River, if you'd just state your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Tyler Fox from J M Two Architecture, representing Pastor Matt Greco of Real Life Church.
Do you have the postings and affidavits for the public hearing?
Yes, I do. I'm here speaking on behalf of Pastor Matt Greco of Real Life Church. We're here seeking approval of our site plan application for the Real Life Church, twenty-nine Dogwood Drive in Waiting River. I'd like to offer a few corrections to the agenda of our application. We actually have a change to the, the area, the square footages of, that's listed on the application. Says thirty-one hundred square feet. We actually have proposed a three thousand square foot addition with the basement of three thousand square foot, making a total of six thousand square feet. Also, it has here a second phase proposed addition, which is no longer true. We no longer have a second phase for this project, the first phase is the only phase, which is the three thousand square foot first floor and three thousand square foot basement. Pastor Matt Greco is here if you'd like to know a little bit more about what he does with the church. But the, the site plan is, like the agenda says, a three thousand square foot addition to an existing church with site improvements. We have grading, new sidewalks, new asphalt. We provide, Pastor Matt owns a satellite parking area across the street. You'll see on here, there's three lots noted on the agenda, one is Lot Two. That is actually a satellite parking area that's used only for parking for his Sunday masses. I, we also had a se- separate hearing about a month ago in which we addressed some of the comments from that hearing. One of them was a fence on the east side of the property. So we have on our revised site plans a four foot fence that's along the entirety of the east side of the property just for a little more separation from the property to the east.
What's the basement used for?
Basement's used for youth meetings, children meetings. I know Pastor Matt would like to speak a little as to.
Okay.
Yeah, youth service and children meeting rooms are in the basement.
Does the sanctuary take most of the first floor, is that what it is?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep, so the first floor comprised of mostly sanctuary space. In fact, the entirety of the addition is sanctuary space and we have offices and renovated handicap accessible bathrooms and such taking part of the existing building that's there.
So Sunday school or whatever is, is.
Exactly.
Though we had discussed traffic during the work session, is there a traffic study pending?
There, Pastor Matt has spoke to an engineer who, um, who appears he doesn't recommend a traffic study for the parcel. I know we spoke with the town board at our discussion that they recommended a traffic study. I know the planning board discussion, it wasn't necessarily recommended. I guess we wanted a little more information on how to proceed. I know that what we're proposing here isn't going to have an impact on the traffic that's there now. The addition is merely to accommodate the number for the mass of who is attending the church now. So we don't really anticipate any increase in traffic. So I, I know he has spoken to a professional traffic engineer about the matter. I, we do not have a traffic study for Sunday mornings in the works currently.
Okay. How many members does the congregation have currently?
Uh, my name is Matt Greco, I'm the pastor of Real Life Church. We have discussed the traffic study with Steven Schneider, who is the engineer on the Vecisha, I think, I think that's the way it's pronounced, project that is directly across on the south side of twenty-five A, across from our intersection. According to his calculations, he has not done an exact signal calculation on Sunday mornings for this project, but he, his recommendation says the problem that already exists, he presumes will not be required for us to construct a signal as the, the other project is still in the works and is moving forward. He also said you're not generating enough new trips as compared to the number of vehicles that are already on the road at that intersection. That was his statement in regards to the necessity of a traffic study at this time. We have approximately, there's about fifty to seventy-five families in that range that attend our church on a weekly basis.
Anyone from the public have any comments or questions for this application?
Good evening, Sid Bale, President of Waiting River Civic Association. I was at the work session that, with the presentation, Matt Greco, Pastor Greco, should say Matt, made. I realized that a church is a permitted use in a, in residential zones. I realized that there's been a church there for many, many years and it's, it's very, very small, the building is very small. And the fact that it's really kind of in scale with the rest of the stuff on Dogwood Lane and it's a residential area. And my concern is on the impact out of, the applicants are suggesting it will have very little impact. One of the things that was discussed at the work session was traffic. And I don't recall whether they actually did recommend an actual traffic study, but this sort of, is sort of like a hearsay kind of thing, well, I talked to so and so and they say you don't need, need this. I think is a rather unusual thing. I think the, the corner of Dogwood and twenty-five A is going to be problematic. I think the project that the pastor was talking. Uh I think the project that the pastor was talking about is Venetia. Right, yeah, Venetia. And um there's gonna be additional retail use uh with the pediatric dentist on the corner of of Dogwood Lane. And uh I'm not against the church. Um the, I do think it's good that they've eliminated the the third phase. And um they're going to just go forward, is it a three thousand square foot? And uh and with a three thousand foot square foot basement. But they say that there are fifty to seventy-five families that presently use the church. Um I would imagine if you're doing all this, you anticipate growth or you're encouraging growth. And I think, you know, that should be taken into consideration. You're saying, well, you only have fifty to seventy-five families. Uh I don't think that's gonna be the case in the future. I think you'd be disappointed if that that's all that that showed up. And we keep talking about Sunday morning, Sunday morning is gonna be the 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 focus of this. Um a lot of our churches are used throughout the week for a variety of reasons. Um everything from uh uh. Bingo. Yeah, right. Uh uh daycare, child daycare, adult uh daycare, et cetera. And uh sometimes it's an economic necessity in, you know, in order to do that, besides being a a good service, uh you know, to the community. So, um I guess my basic concern is if this comes to fruition. Will it continue to fit into the neighborhood the way it has for, I don't know how many years the 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 building has been there? Twenty, thirty years, forty years, forty years. So tha- that's my concern.
Sid, I've listened to you speak for about five minutes now.
Yes.
And I'm still not sure if you're for it or against it.
I'm for it if it doesn't uh adversely impact the residential neighborhood that's been there for forty or fifty years.
Sid, did you, did you notice the comment where you hear when Mr. Cuddy made his comment about churches in the in the in the residential areas in the town?
I said, I know they're permitted, yes.
The gen- no, what he said was generally, it was better for the neighborhood overall.
Right.
Okay, now he's going back.
Did he say always?
Excuse me?
Did he say always?
I I couldn't, I, he didn't mention one that was not. And I can, I can assure you that Pastor, if he has, when he has Bible study on Wednesday.
Right.
He would love to see all of his families show up on Wednesday, but I can assure you that that's not the case unfortunately. It would be great.
Right.
But um you know, I I I think we're putting the cart a little bit before the horse. I I, you know, I I, if it's been, if it's been good for all these years, I have every reason to believe it will continue to be to do so.
So the size doesn't ma- matter you, matter to you?
You you know, you have to grow, you have to, a church has to grow. You know, it's important that a church grows.
Right.
So.
I just wanna put those things on on the record.
Thank you.
Because, you know, um uh the pastor, uh as far as I know, is well respected in the community and et cetera. And I'd like, like to see prevent any kind of friction in future.
I I completely respect and and totally understand uh some of the concerns that have been made. In fact, at our last meeting with the zoning board, uh many of the same concerns were brought up by uh our two nearest neighbors just to the north of us. Um both of those neighbors, actually one to the east of us, Mr. Bates. Um all three of those neighbors I sat and I met with after our meeting. Um our our biggest opponent in that meeting, um I sat with for over three hours, just enjoying a a drink and talking about the the project that is before us. And one of our concerns that we've expressed from the beginning of time, and it was the first thing that I said to both Tyler and James, was that our desire is to conform to our neighborhood. We recognize that we are in a residential neighborhood. And the last thing that we want is for our building to stick out in such a way that it is a draw on our neighborhood. So all of the materials that we've chosen to use, even the height of the building that we've chosen to go with, the direction that we've chosen to build, rather than going up, we're going behind our current building. All of our parking is behind our current building, um so that it is not out in the front where people would see. Um we're, we're wanting our building to match the appearance of what the neighborhood looks like. Because as I shared in our last meeting, it's not about what goes on inside the four walls of Real Life Church, it's what we do outside of the four walls. And having those relationships with our community, which is the reason why I engaged in those conversations with the three members, uh families that were here at our last meeting. Um our services, the total number of families is split up over two services on Sunday morning. There's a nine AM and a ten thirty, which alleviates a lot of that traffic issue. I would be uh glad to share with you the email that came from Steven Schneider, the engineer on the traffic study uh for the project across on Dogwood. Um if anybody is interested in seeing that email. Um but if there's any other questions, I I certainly answer anything I can do uh to help with this.
I suspect you're a pretty good pastor.
I try my best.
Okay.
To love people, the best I can.
The email?
You would like to see that email?
I, you know.
You could just forward it to Greg. And he'll get it to us.
I certainly will. Okay?
I ju- I just wanna take a a moment just to clarify the reason behind the traffic study. Um traffic was an issue that was raised as a concern at the town board meeting. Uh what I did is I looked at projects, as he spoke, Venetia Square has conducted a traffic impact study for their project, which is just south of Dogwood on twenty-five A, large development. The traffic impact study analyzed traffic, I believe it was weekday peak PM hours and then on Saturday afternoon peak and evening peak. Uh the results of that traffic study showed that existing conditions with no Venetia Square build, no church build, the existing conditions, that intersection was a failing intersection. So what I had recommended to kind of get ahead of any anticipated issues from the town board, I had recommended just doing sort of a supplemental on a Sunday morning. So that way, when we go to the town board, we can say, look, the intersection as it exists is a failing intersection, there's long queue times, uh you know, large waits on these peak periods. Wanted to try to get ahead of that and address that through the town board. Um you know, do I think the church is a, like the spark that would require a traffic signal? No, it it the fact of the matter is, as it is right now, you know, we're, planning staff is gonna make a recommendation to, you know, a traffic committee or the town board to possibly petition the state to provide some sort of mitigation at this point, because it is a.
We met supervisor yesterday, and she's going to link the name with the representative department of transportation. Because the traffic as exists today in that area is, has beyond heaven. And there needs to be some sort of mitigation to that. Issue today without DC Square, without the church, we need to take a look at that today. Um having said that, um DC Square have used uh Schneider engineering, pastor engineering, I think that we have to reach out to him. I spoke with uh Mrs. Schneider myself at Great Street, the manager.
Yeah.
And um there is concern by the town board, as part of the zoning board, that there is concern about the traffic in this area. And what in additional impact this church can have on the church. This, if the intersection is a failure now, from those levels of service, will this add much to it? Probably not, there's a, when it's, it's a smaller addition, addition to the church compared to the surrounding development that's taking place, but it's also a significant challenge. Um having said that, as Greg pointed out, we can speak with the designer, we can point out that there may be need or desire by the town, but if the planning board or the town board do a supplemental to what the traffic site has already been done. See that this is going to cause an additional delays at that intersection.
What, the the forty or fifty people that go there on Sundays now?
No, with the additional buildup.
Oh, but we can't, would you fair to ask the church to do that?
No, 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 but if if there was, then we need to, cannot count that also. Uh one comment was made at the town board meeting, is maybe there's a different generation or distribution that can take place agrees that. That was a comment that was not my comment, would be a comment made at the town board level. So, we just suggested that if they reach out to a company engineer to have that discussion, so he prepares to address it with you in the public hearing. So that's what we are.
So, I mean, I agree that there's an issue with that intersection and what's proposed there, especially the, you know, Venetia.
And they're pro- they're proposing a chapter three.
Right, so, but you know, I don't know.
I don't think we can hang a hat, it's happening on on this.
So we'll take a look at that email and then we'll, we'll move forward from there. Any other questions or comments from the public, from the board on this public hearing?
Will we close the public hearing for Real Life Church?
The motion being seconded to close the public hearing for Real Life Church, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Okay, before we vote on the resolutions, any comments from the public on any of the resolutions? Any public comments? Okay. Number one on the agenda.
I'll make a motion to move resolution number sixty-two of Riverhead Planning Board for chapter two ninety-two for James Luskazel, some word.
Second.
Okay, motion being seconded to approve resolution sixty-two for chapter two nineteen, James Luskazel, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution is approved. Uh number two is amended, right?
Yep, I'll move uh resolution sixty-three uh chap- for chapter two nineteen for Donald Schneider Junior as amended.
Second in motion?
Okay, motion being seconded to approve resolution sixty-three as amended for chapter two eighteen for Donald Schneider, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Resolution is approved, number three. Number three is gonna be the table, because the SWIP is not complete yet. So motion to table sixty-four?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Sixty-four is table. Number four on the agenda?
Number sixty-five, Bidding Hollow Cottage condominium number twenty-two. Second in motion?
The motion being seconded to approve resolution sixty-five to schedule a public hearing for Bidding Hollow Cottage condominium number twenty-two, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution is approved. Any comments from the public on any of the matter in front of the planning board? Any comments?
Make a motion that we move the minutes of the July nineteenth meeting with the head planning board, some word.
The motion made second to approve July nineteenth, twenty eighteen minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Minutes are approved. Okay, the next meeting is August sixteenth at three PM. Motion to adjourn.
Motion?
Thank you.